Good afternoon. I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for roll call, please.
Here.
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 That.
Summer McBride.
Brandon Nichols.
Here.
Carol Segala.
Here.
Jessica Hoppe.
Here.
Here.
Present. Thank you very much. And can you tell us if there are any AB 2449 requests? Commissioners who are gonna participate remotely as a result of physical or family medical emergency that prevents them from attending?
Confirming that there are no.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Let's move directly into our report out of our closed session of the Executive Committee for June 8th, 2023.
Yes, Chair. Thank you. So earlier, the Board participated in a special meeting during which there was a closed session for Government Code Section 54957B1. There was discussion had, but no reportable action was.
Thank you very much. And a good lunch was had by all as well. We're gonna move on to item four, our consent items. Can we call for a public comment on the consent agenda, please? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Linda. And good afternoon, Commissioners. I just wanted to briefly discuss item 4C on the consent agenda, which is the request to approve 34 renewals and authorize staff to complete the execution. If you recall from our last board meeting, when we reviewed the fiscal year 2324 budget, part of the way it was developed is looking at our historical spend, looking what's ahead of us, and looking at expenditures in the future. So what these renewals represent is that work. That work focused on fiscal year 2324. So that's what these renewals are for. Together, these renewals amount to approximately about $40 of our next year's budget. And the reason why there's a number of them compared to the previous months is just typically a majority of our contracts are on annual renew cycle. So that explains the number that is brought here today. And the reason why it's coming for the Board today additionally is that per our procurement policy, agreements and amendments in aggregate that are over $150,000 go for the Board approval under consent agenda. So these renewals, that is part of this consent agenda, meet that requirement for that. And just to point out other things in item 4C, the memo does have a breakdown of all our active contracts. The number of renewals, the number of contracts that are not going to be renewed or leading to expire to end of this month. And then finally, the other item on the agenda, which is the listing of all the contracts. That's just a detail of the 34 renewals, project information, the start and end dates for those. So again, just wanted to highlight those renewals. It's a little bit higher than typical, but that's just because it is part of our work for next fiscal year and we're on an annual renewal cycle. So just wanted to inform the Board for that. If you have any questions, I'm here and along with staff behind me to provide any answers to these.
Thank you for that very much. Any questions from Commissioners? All right, seen none. I'll entertain a motion. Moved by Mitchell. Is a second required, Council? Is a second required for consent?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner has done, I made the motion, it's been seconded by the Commissioner. With that, will you call the roll, please?
Judy Abdo.
Yes.
Luis Batista.
For items 4A through 4F and items 4H and 4I, I vote yes. I abstain from the vote on item 4G pursuant to Government Code Section 1091.
Noted. Robert Byrd.
So my vote is yes, and I would like to disclose the following. I'm employed by the Department of Mental Health, as you know, which is a party to the proposed agreement under item 4F. I currently receive a salary from the Department of Mental Health for my position as Deputy Director for the Prevention Services Division. However, pursuant to the non-interest exemption provided in Government Code Section 1091.5, subsection A, subsection nine, I do not have an interest in this proposed agreement with the MH that would disqualify me from participating in the.
So noted. Astrid Hager.
Yes.
Yvette Martinez.
Yes.
Summer McBride.
Yes.
Brandon Nichols.
Yes.
Carol Segala.
Yes.
And Holly Mitchell.
Yes.
Motion is passed with those disclosures at abstention.
Thank you.
And thank you. Moving on to item five, remarks by the Commission. Let me start with some fun. I had the privilege of spending a little time at Kidstown, a KYCC childcare center in Crenshaw area, and the Hawthorne Head Start operated by Crystal Stairs. And I asked the young scholars at these two childcare facilities to draw me pictures of what they loved in their neighborhood, in their community, and the artistic brilliance and the vision. And what struck me was in every picture, without question, there was a clear blue sky, there were beautiful trees, there was tree canopy, there were dog parks, there were fruit trees. Everybody had green grass, so they must not know about the water shortages. I'm sorry, Commissioner. Everybody's grass was much greener than mine. One in particular included a hotel, a hospital, a supermarket, and a swimming pool, all in the community. So I just thought I would bring these amazing depictions of our neighborhoods back to share with all of you. This isn't all of them, because I had two classrooms full. These are the two, the four that I happen to have in my briefcase, just to let you know that we're doing good work because our youngest county residents, they understand what is important, what are important elements to have in their communities, and I was so tickled. Last but not least, during lunch, many of us were talking about kind of how long many of us have been around ECE. And many of my and our collective friends and colleagues were in Sacramento this week, participated in, you know, child action. And they went old school. And I remember making these images and we would put the stories of the kids, oh, here it is, on the back so we could leave them with legislators. So I said, well, send me one, because I don't think I have it anymore. So I'm gonna thank CCRC for bringing me my child action child with the story about the importance of supporting early care and education. Would in doubt, go old school and pull up the felt board and twirly eyes to make your point. So I just wanted to share that with everybody. What I love about being on this commission now is it takes me to my happy place, which is fighting for very young children. I'd like to begin by thanking all of the first five staff for your hard work as we continue to navigate all of the changes, including your new Board Chair, your new Vice Chair, our new Executive Director. And as we continue to work on the strategic reset and landscape analysis, your expertise will be relied upon by all of us who serve here on the Board. And to my fellow Commissioners, of course, your leadership will continue to serve to be pivotal and timely as we take serious, as you always have, our leadership role to really move First Five LA forward into a fiscally sound and sustainable future. So it's a pleasure to serve with all of you. You know, we know that change isn't easy. And we are gonna continue to challenge ourselves and figure out what we bring to this work, that how we add value. And the question I often ask myself, it was a question posed to me by the Executive Director of Hopics, which is, how big is your brave? And sometimes I tweak that and figure out how big is my why. You know, I really want to push forward in terms of why we do this work and really think about it on a significant grand scale. Because that's what allows us to do all that we can for Angelenos, the youngest among us. You know, as we look at the current budget, you know, I see investments in programs that will continue to improve and benefit the lives of families and children across LA County. And, you know, I believe that budgets are seen as a reflection of an organization's values and priorities. So I'm happy to see that programs such as the African American Infant and Maternal Mortality Prevention Initiative and Welcome Baby Home Program will continue to thrive. These programs are really making a significant difference in our community. That's not me ringing, is it? Should I be concerned about that or keep talking?
You can keep talking, Madam Chair.
Who's trying to?
We're trying to find out where it's coming from.
Not a problem. These programs are making a difference in our community, so we're fortunate to have them at the center of our values and priorities. I believe First Five LA is setting the standard in the right direction for others across this state to follow. And I know my fellow Commissioners feel the same. And so it's an honor to serve with all of you. It's a privilege and honor that I don't take lightly to serve as your Chair. And I'm pleased with the budget that they pulled together. And so it's my expectation that we will remain committed and focused on the main thing, which are the youngest Angelenos that we all feel a commitment to. With that. There are public comment on my report.
Confirming there are no public comments on your report.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Let's move on to item six, which is the Executive Director's Report. Carla.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I'm gonna ask Linda to come get these in a second. What you all don't see, there's children drawn and the wonderful pictures that our Chair brought. But Holly is part of these pictures as well. All the children put themselves in and put in our office chair. It's really, and I don't think our Chair noticed, but it's just really, really sweet. So we'll share these with you all. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our June Commissioner Meeting. It is really, really exciting to start this month with all of you during a time in which we celebrate the Fathers in the Room, or those of you that are celebrating Fathers that have given you all the wisdom that many of you carry here. We commemorate Juneteenth and we share our pride as members and allies of the LGBTQ community. And of course, it is fiscal month, so celebrating our fiscal team as well. Today, the team will present the proposed budget for 202324. And in this budget, we continue to reduce spending to align with our evolving fiscal reality. And as the Chair mentioned, this budget really does reflect our values and signals the type of work that First Five LA has done a tremendous job of carrying in previous years and will continue to carry. It also signals some information for our strategic plan reset. So this Board in February encouraged us to think about a strategic plan reset. And during that conversation in February, you all shared it would be really important to look at the landscape, what has happened and what is happening with children and families in our communities, especially after, as we are coming out of the pandemic portal. Today, you will hear that landscape. It is a very comprehensive landscape that our team has pulled together. You'll hear some of it today, some of it end of June and early July. And in July, we will bring Chrissy and Associates, consultants, that will be helping us with the strategic reset. So we will be in a discussion regarding the SWOT analysis. In addition, we really want to thank all of you and encourage strategic insights as we go into the strategic reset. All of you received the Ghost Framework, and we hope to cover more of that in the future. We also hope you noticed some of the building upgrades. I wonder if any of you did not notice there was a color change in here, but you could see. So we are in the middle of updating some of the building colors, and we will be welcoming staff back into the building in July. Quick announcement on our capital improvement projects. This is the first phase. We are looking at the first floor for some updates. And then we will be looking to update the rest of the building with some of the capital investments that you all made already. So we look forward to having those conversations with you. We will focus on a community space on the first floor. We're looking at potential leasing for other floors in the building, and we'll keep you updated as some of that happens. With that, thank you, Honorable Chair, and turning it back to you.
Thank you very much. Public comment on the Executive Director's Report?
Confirming there are no public comments on the Executive Director's Report.
Thank you. And at any point, if a Commissioner wants to comment, please just let me know, and we'll call on you as well. Hearing no public comment, let's move on to our informational item, Agenda Item 7, on the proposed budget that we've been talking about. And I'll hand it over to staff to present the fiscal year 0304 budget.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Well, she disappeared. We'll send her a message when she gets back. And good afternoon, Commissioners. So this is an actual action item. It's not an information. We did provide this as an information item at last month's board meeting. And I really want to appreciate some of the opening comments from both Supervisor Mitchell and our Executive Director Carla. And that the budget does tell the story. It really highlights not only the values that we hold tightly as an organization at First Five, but it also reflects commitment to our young children of LA County and within the programs that we're investing in and the work that we invest and partner with many of you heads at different departments at the county. And it just, you know, like I mentioned, it does tell a story. And it is how it's, it's just, it reflects on how big our why is, because it really, $99.1 million invested in children zero to five is definitely a big, big why for LA County. And I'm happy to be a part of that. This item again is a action item. It is more of a housekeeping item and that we did present to you back in May. There has been no changes to what we have presented to you at the May Board Presentation. We're still proposing the $99.1 million budget, which Daisy will be walking us through. She will also be walking through the resolution, which covers not only the budget that we're proposing, the long-term financial plan. And then there's some administrative piece related to our year-end process around our fund balance. And I'll pass it to Daisy, who takes the lead in not only preparing our budget, but working across the organization with all of our colleagues, which this budget definitely does reflect the dedication and hard work of our staff and my colleagues across the organization.
Absolutely. Daisy? Thank you, Raul. Good afternoon, Commissioners, staff, and guests. So as Raul just noted, the purpose of today's presentation is to request formal approval of the fiscal year 2324 budget and updates to the LTFP, the Long-Term Financial Plan, through the adoption of Resolution Number 202303, which includes the following actions. First, we are requesting to replace last year's resolution. Second, we are requesting approval of the fiscal year 2324 budget items, including the proposed budget and the administrative limit. Third, consistent with previous years, we are asking for approval and endorsement of the GASBY 54 Fund Balance commitments of slightly over 81 million, which includes the proposed programmatic resources for fiscal year 2324, as well as the remaining balance for the Capital Improvement Fund. You can find information in the 2324 Draft Budget Attachment F, which is part of today's Board Book materials. And just as a quick reminder, committed funds are those funds that have been directly directed by the Commission through a resolution for a specific purpose. That includes multi-year allocations and the approved fiscal year budget. You will receive more information pertaining to our fund balance through the audit process later this year in September. Additionally, we are requesting approval of the reserve for 2324, calculated at 50% of the total budget or $49.6 million. And finally, we are requesting approval of the updates to the Long-Term Financial Plan, which formally assigns funds through fiscal year 2728. So just to be clear on the request and expectations, this request for approval of the updates to the LTFP is separate from the conversation around the future state of the plan and improved alignment to our fiscal realities, which we discussed and was shared last month. That discussion will resume in fiscal year 2324. Materials pertaining to these requests are included in today's Board Book. So as a reminder, the total proposed fiscal year 2324 budget of $99.1 million reflected in this table is consistent with the estimates presented at the previous points of Board Engagement on May 2nd and May 4th. The proposed cost estimates result in a more strategic and prudent budget aligned to the fiscal reality of increasingly declining revenues. As mentioned during previous Board Engagement touchpoints, the fiscal year 2324 Administrative Cost Limit is calculated at $13.4 million and represents approximately 13 and a half percent of the total proposed budget. Now turning it over to Raul to go over some of the Long-Term Financial Plan highlights.
Thank you, Daisy. So again, the purpose of the Long-Term Financial Plan is to support with the financial stewardship role of First Five LA's Commission and the leadership team. It provides a framework to help guide and prioritize planning decisions for not only today, but for the future. The updated plan also plays a critical role as we reevaluate and prioritize work during the upcoming strategic planning reset process. The key takeaway for this year's update is to highlight the impact in the context of Proposition 31. The overall impact of Proposition 31 increases the gap, which you see at the end of 2728, this graph. Excuse me, increases the gap between our revenues and our expenditures, increasing the demand on our overall fund balance. And by the end of fiscal year 2728, the gap is now projected to be 24.5 million compared to the 11.6 million, compared to the 11.6 million using our available fund balance, resulting in us using our available fund balance at a quicker pace than originally anticipated back in 2020. As mentioned in last month's presentation, we are fiscally sound, but we do need to revisit and prioritize our future spending, including revisiting the established spending limits we established prior to Proposition 31. As we move into Strategic Plan Reset Process, we do need to make both difficult and strategic decisions to align to our new fiscal reality. And as part of our fiduciary responsibility, we as staff will continue to provide updates to the Board as we get further information from the Department of Finance, and in addition, update components of our long-term financial plan during the Strategic Plan Reset Process. Now moving to the assumptions and adjustments that we made and fidelity to the approved 10-year plan through 2728. Thank you, Daisy. Thank you, Daisy. We continue to reflect the established spending limits, beginning with fiscal year twenty four twenty five, with eighty five percent of the spending allocated to programs and no more than fifteen percent for admin administrative costs. The annual spending rate will continue to decline at a rate of six point four seven percent with the objective of creating a glide path, as you saw in the prior graph, to align our revenues with our expenditures, starting with fiscal year twenty four twenty five. And per our policy, the updated plan does continue to assume a fifty percent of the total budget as a reserve. That reserve was established prior to fiscal year twenty twenty when we went through the SPR four process and where we did an evaluation across all of First Five Systems and did an average of everyone's reserve. And what we recommended at that time was a fifty percent reserve. That fifty percent reserve will also be revisited as we continue to look at different strategies and update our long-term financial plan during the Strategic Plan Reset Process. As for key adjustments, starting with fiscal year twenty twenty one through fiscal year twenty one twenty two, the Long-Term Financial Plan was updated to reflect actual spending. For fiscal year twenty two twenty three, the LTFP was updated to reflect the current mid-year budget adjustment approved back in February of twenty twenty two and, and to reflect the actual, sorry, reflected back in February of twenty twenty three and reflect the actual spending of ninety six point eight million versus the hundred and ten point four million dollars. And finally, for twenty three twenty four, the updated LTFP does reflect the proposed budget that's before you of ninety nine point one million dollars. As for the revenue components of the Long-Term Financial Plan, revenues were updated to the most current projections that were provided from the Department of Finance, which was provided back in April, two months ago, in April of twenty twenty three. And we also confirmed some of our external fundings as we updated those external fundings based on confirmation. Our revenue projections, we do believe that within the next quarter, we will get more information from First Five California and the Department of Finance on when we can expect new figures. And we will continue to work with the Department of Finance, CDTFA, and of course, our colleagues with First Five California and First Five Association. Thank you. And based on these overall assumptions and adjustment, the result of our updated Long-Term Financial Plan reflects the following: An accelerated decline in revenues due to Prop Thirty One. We reflect the decrease in our expenditures for fiscal year twenty three twenty four and a projected available fund balance to be approximately eighty four point six million down, which is down by sixteen point four million dollars from the hundred and one million dollars that we projected back in November of twenty twenty two. This is all a result of Proposition Thirty One. Now to pivot to our fund balance, also known as, for us accounting geeks, as GASP fifty four, which, this is my jam. The purpose of presenting this slide is to meet our year-end closing requirements for our audit. By acting today on the fiscal year twenty three twenty four budget, the board imposes the use of these resources that are before you, creating specific constraints on the use of these fund balance remaining. Every year prior to closing of the fiscal year, finance reconciles the actions that the board has taken throughout the year and projects the fund balance comprised of the four hierarchies established by the Government Accounting Standard Board. Now for me, that means something. For the common folks, people are asking, what does that mean? Well, what it means in plain speak is that we have a significant fund balance. And within that fund balance, based on government accounting structure, there are specific constraints in the hierarchy where these funds are committed to. And at the end of every fiscal year, staff has to do a projection prior to we completing the audit process. So this is more of a of just a, a process that we need to go through in order to meet our auditing our auditing expectations and things that we must do and put in place prior to the board taking action. Again, this presentation is a formality and the final audited numbers will be presented at the September PPC meeting and then at the October board meeting when we present the year-end annual comprehensive annual report. And then as for next steps, we're hoping that the board will take action and we get an approved budget. And then based on that, we will start closing the books and then updating our fund balance. And then throughout the fiscal year, once we finalize and approve our fund balance, we will also be looking at how we update our long-term financial plan. And as we get more information from both the Department of Finance and CDTFA, along with the First Five Association and First Five California, we see that we will be coming back to you as more information is gathered and as we update our long-term financial plan throughout the Strategic Plan Reset Process. I now pass it to our supervisor for a motion.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Before we do that, we want to, I want to see if there's any commissioners that want to make comments about the, what was presented to us. Here, please.
And we talked about I've been involved You made it to the road. Hopefully we'll have a Secondly, I think you touched on it several times, the red states, but sometimes I have to say it back just to make sure I heard what you said. Because we, we are approving also not only the budget for the Long-Term Financial Plan and that's based on some assumptions. So as the, the numbers actually come in, we give you a back of pop thirty one and as we get more from First Five California, we'll return here with recommendations and some ability to adjust our fin, oh, I'm on. Good afternoon. Some ability to adjust the financial plan depending on how those assumptions actually play out. And would that be like a quarterly basis, six months? Do you have an idea kind of when our next look at that might be?
So our, historically, we update our Long-Term Financial Plan on an annual basis. But because we're going through the Strategic Plan Reset and because there's some uncertainty related to Proposition Thirty One, we believe that we're going to get updated information on the revenue projections. And as we get clear on the Strategic Plan Reset, we feel like it should be in our best interest to be coming back to you, at least by the fall, and giving, and to give you a picture of where we're at.
Great, and that kind of addressed, not that I was hesitant, but it's hard to make a commitment now that goes four years out when, when the future's a little unclear. So I think coming back and just kind of letting this know as the information rolls up will help. So thank you for that.
Most importantly.
Thank you. As I whispered to the Vice Chair, I said, you know, referendum give, referendum take away. So that's certainly the season that we are now experiencing. Let's open it up for public comment on Agenda Item Seven.
Confirming there are no public comments on item seven.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept fiscal year twenty three twenty four budget. Did you get them both and we need them to say it into the mic?
I believe I got Dr. Bird as the, the motion and Carol Segala as the second.
Okay, that's fine. With that, will you please call the roll?
Judy Abdo?
Yes.
Luis Bautista?
Yes.
Robert Bird? Astrid Hager?
Yes.
Yvette Martinez?
Yes.
Summer McBride?
Yes.
Brandon Nichols?
Yes.
Carol Segala?
Yes.
And Holly Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Congratulations. Thank you very much, both of you, for your presentations. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Moving on to another informational or an informational item, item eight, we're going to receive and file First Five California's annual report. And we're going to hear from Ari Kim. Thank you and welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, staff and members of the public. Today's public hearing is intended for us to comply with the annual requirement of reviewing and filing First Five California's annual report for fiscal year twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two and close out our annual reporting process for the fiscal year that has already been completed. First Five LA's annual report data for the current fiscal year will be shared during the September and October board meeting. So we will begin by providing a background, background on First Five California's annual report and to provide key highlights from fiscal year twenty one twenty two, including information on statewide expenditures, populations reached and policy progress. So one of the conditions of receiving Proposition Ten Tobacco Tax Funds is holding a public hearing at least once a year to review and file First Five California annual report. To generate this report, each county commission was required to submit annual report data to First Five California, which includes data on revenue and expenditures, populations reached and key evaluation and county highlights. Commissioners approved First Five LA's submission of the annual report data at the October twenty twenty two Board of Commissioners meeting. First Five California then distills the information into an annual report, which summarizes the collective efforts of the fifty eight county commissions statewide and First Five California as an entity. The First Five California's fiscal year twenty one twenty two annual report is included in your board materials packet. So First Five California requires that investments made by county commissions be categorized into four result areas. Three result areas focus on direct service, which are child health, family functioning and child development. The last result area is improved systems of care, which focuses on systems change efforts. So it is important to note how First Five California categorizes investments through result areas, does not fully capture the type of impact, the systems change work of county commissions. As a result, we cannot provide more detailed information on the collective systems change work by the county commissions. The First Five California annual report does, however, include policy progress that is in line with their own policy agenda, which I will highlight later on in this presentation. Please note that the information presented through this item is a distinct process from First Five LA's Strategic Plan Reset and our landscape analysis. So let's dive in into the highlights from the report on information about statewide expenditures, children reached and key policy progress throughout our highlight connections to First Five LA's work. So county commission expenditures, oh, sorry, for expenditures, this graph depicts how the expenditures were split across First Five California result areas in fiscal year twenty one twenty two. The green bars represent expenditures of First Five LA and the blue represents expenditures of county commissions statewide. County commission expenditures were similarly distributed across the four result area with a slight leaning towards child health investments like home visiting. Similarly, out of the three direct service result areas, First Five LA also expanded the most funding to improve child health. Where there is a sizable difference in the distribution of funding is the investments aimed at systems of care. Compared to county commissions statewide, First Five LA expended a significantly higher percentage towards systems of care investments such as Best Start Efforts, Policy Advocacy Funds and Help Me Grow LA. This is consistent with our strategic direction as a systems change agent. Now I'll talk about children reached in fiscal year twenty one twenty two. County commissions statewide served a total of five hundred seventy five thousand eight hundred sixteen children, which accounts for twenty one percent of total population of children aged zero through five in California. This graph depicts the percentage of children aged, reached by age group. Like the previous graph, green bars represents children reached by First Five LA investments and the blue represents children reached by First Five County Commissions statewide. We can see that First Five LA reached a greater percentage of children under three years old compared to the county commissions statewide. This includes children served through a welcome baby program. Though a limitation to this data is the high percentage of unknown age of the statewide data for the First Five commissions. So next, I'm going to transition to key policy progress made by First Five California Commission. In fiscal year twenty one twenty two, First Five California advocated for policies that promote and support young children and their families. The policy progress I will highlight are only two of many examples where First Five LA contributed to advocating for. First Five California partnered with county commissions, including First Five LA, to actively support and advocate for the reauthorization and expansion of the Maternal Infant and Early Childhood Home Visiting Program, which allowed for continued funding to provide more equitable access of home visiting programs to low-income families. In addition, First Five California co-sponsored and partnered with over four hundred fifty organizations to advocate for Senate Bill nine fifty one in making paid family leave and state disability insurance program more accessible for families. First Five LA officially supported the bill, which will allow low-income families to take paid time off from work to bond with a new child without risking their economic security. This concludes the annual report process for fiscal year twenty one twenty two. We're exploring additional ways to collect and examine local data through the lens of First Five LA's Strategic Plan and Systems Change Approaches and will return in fall with the current fiscal year twenty two twenty three annual report data. Finally, First Five California plans to convene a work group to reevaluate the annual report and discuss the purpose, format, needs and data sources by working with First Five Associations and County Commissions. So with that, I will hand it back to Chair Mitchell to open for public comment and questions from Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll start with questions from Commissioners if there are any. Seeing none, we'll go to public comment.
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. We'll now take a ten-minute break. We're ahead of time. How would, what would you like to do?
Five minutes.
You want to keep going? Okay, so what time would you like to take the break instead? Okay. Why don't we go ahead and get started with the next presentation, our Strategic Plan Reset, Key Takeaways from Landscape Analysis? And we were going to take a short break after the first section. After, after Mr. Wagner. All right, so after Mr. Wagner's presentation, we will take our short break then, if that works for all the Commissioners.
With that?
Excellent, thank you. And while they're sitting at, we're going to hear from Antoinette Andrews-Bush, Chief Transformation Officer. Anishka? Renesha, pronounce your last name for me.
Reykachewsko.
Okay, one more time, one more time.
Reykachewsko.
Reykachewsko.
Perfection.
Yeah, I've got skills, you didn't know. Data strategist, thank you. And John Wagner, thank you, John. Executive Vice President, we'll go ahead and get started. Antoinette? Now, are you on?
No.
Yeah.
Now? Okay.
Yes.
All right, there we go. So good afternoon, Commissioners, and to my colleagues and to members of the public. When we started the Strategic Plan Reset, we started with a question, a simple but powerful a simple but powerful question. What is happening with children and families in Los Angeles County since the pandemic? And that was not just a rhetorical question, it was a real question, because our strategic plan reset has to be grounded in what's happening with children and families right now. And so we started to conduct an environmental scan, a landscape analysis internally and externally, to help us better understand what's happening and the best ways for first five LA to contribute. So today, my colleagues and I are going to share data and analysis from the internal and external landscape, and we look forward to hear your perspectives on what is being presented today. The landscape analysis consisted of five components, and they're going to be through five sections that we will go through during today's conversation. So first, we looked at data that helps us understand the current conditions of children and families where most, where the most recent data was available. Public policy opportunities with particular emphasis on those that have a direct impact on children P to five or prenatal to five in Los Angeles County that can benefit from first five LA's unique vantage point. We took a look at what we've learned from our experience implementing first five LA initiatives and lessons learned around how we operate as an organization. And finally, we looked to the broader field, reviewing reports from other public agencies, philanthropy, nonprofit organizations, and researchers to gather their insights and learning. And each of these five components are going to be presented today, and we know that we're presenting a lot of information. So midway through the presentation, we will take a break, and we'll return from some discussion, and then we'll complete the remainder of the presentation. So at the end, there will be time for additional discussion. So we'll take a break, come back for a discussion, have more presentation, more discussion. So we're trying to figure out ways to break this up for you to help digest the information. So at this time, I'm going to pass it to my colleague Neshka, who will begin with data on the conditions of young children and their families.
Thank you. Thank you, Antoinette. Today, I have the honor of sharing learnings from the first section of our landscape, which provides a snapshot of the conditions of young children and their families in LA County. Before I jump in, I just also want to express my gratitude, Madam Chair, to your opening remarks, and just share that for me, exploring this data was one way through which we are gaining a deeper understanding and appreciation for just how big is our why. So there were three questions guiding this section of the landscape. Number one, where are children zero to five residing in LA County? Number two, what do we know about children prenatal five and their families since the pandemic? And number three, what do we want to know about children prenatal to five and their families, but we don't have data for? This slide provides an overview of the 17 indicators we looked at across the categories of demographics, health and safety, basic needs, and family supports. We looked at these conditions countywide, by race, ethnicity, and separately by best art geographies and supervisory districts. In addition, given questions elevated by board members during our March meeting, we also took a look at the, at the data on the ECE system. Today, we will be focusing on key findings from the first three categories, demographics, health and safety, and basic needs. We will have the opportunity to dig in deeper and explore the remaining data at the June PPC meeting. So, without further ado, what have we learned? Starting with our demographics, we explored the population size of our zero to fives, their race, ethnicity, languages spoken in the home, and language preferences, and poverty rates. We learned that there's just over half a million children under five in LA County, and they're quite evenly distributed across ages. We also learned that three out of four children under five are children of color, and with more than half are Latino. And nearly three out of four households with children under five speak a primary language other than English, with over half speaking Spanish. We also learned that poverty rates in Native American and Pacific Islander, Black, and Latino households with children under five are three times the rates of white and Asian households. In terms of where our youngest residents live, we can see on this map that children under five are dispersed throughout LA County. There are census tracts with high numbers of children under five and census tracts with low numbers in every supervisory district. So what did we learn in terms of conditions of health and safety? We took a look at the data for prenatal care, infant mortality rate, low birth rate, risk for negative outcomes, and child protective service involvement. We found that trends for low birth weight, risk for negative outcomes, and involvement with CPS have been relatively consistent in recent years. The data showed that Black children and families experienced the greatest disparities in health and safety conditions. We also found that prenatal care and infant mortality rates have had modest improvements. This includes an increase for Black mothers receiving prenatal care in the first trimester from 75% in 2014 to 80% in 2020, as well as Asian Pacific Islander mothers increasing from 83% in 2014 to 90% in 2020. The next couple of slides are examples that highlight the disparities in health and safety conditions for Black children and families. This data shows disparities in infant mortality rate for Black infants, which was two to three times higher compared to children of other races. And here, we can see that of the children who turned five in 2020, one out of three Black children and one out of three Native American children were referred to CPS at least once during their first five years of life. And finally, we asked, what are the conditions of young children and their families in terms of basic needs? We looked at the data on food insecurity, rent burden, difficulty paying for and finding housing. We learned that many children, oh, sorry, we learned that many families with children under five are experiencing challenges meeting basic needs, with nearly one out of three families experiencing food insecurity, and two out of three struggling to pay for and find housing. We also learned of disparities in access to resources that meet basic needs for Spanish-speaking Latino families. For example, Spanish-speaking Latino families reported highest levels of food insecurity, while English-speaking Latino families experienced the lowest levels of food insecurity in 2020. And similarly, Spanish-speaking Latino families were substantially more likely to experience difficulty finding housing. As I mentioned, today, we are highlighting just some of the key learnings about the conditions of children and families, with the intention to share more at the June PPC. So as a preview, I wanted to close out my section with the themes that are emerging for us as we reflect across the data we've gathered on the conditions of children and families. As already mentioned, most children under five in LA County are children of color. And across conditions, the data is elevating disparities by race, ethnicity, language, and potentially immigration status. The data show that Black children and families experience poor health and safety outcomes, along with high rates of poverty and food insecurity, combined with significant disparities in their access to safety net programs and other family supports. And ultimately, while we're learning a lot by looking at this data, there's still so much we don't know. Due to data limitations, such as the limited availability of data on children under five, limited availability of post-pandemic data, limited data on racial, racial and ethnic subgroups, and finally, limited data on the root causes underlying these findings. So with that teaser, I'm going to hand it over to Sharna to highlight some of our landscape learnings on opportunities within public policy.
Thank you, Neshka. Public policy. In policy opportunities, we were looking to identify opportunities that we can't miss, that can be leveraged to improve conditions for children and families. And we started by looking at opportunities with the criteria, including opportunities that have a direct impact on children's prenatal to five experiences in LA County, looking at the lifespan of the opportunity, not just the proposal stage, but also our role in potential planning tables, implementation partnerships, and technical assistance. First five LA works at the intersection of systems, and we prioritize opportunities that enable or support multiple systems working together. We prioritized opportunities that are deeper than just advocacy, not just the winds on paper, but prioritizing really meaningful implementation and impact and what, for what works in LA County and the diverse needs of our families. And to that point, the opportunity that can benefit from a combination of strategies and tactics that first five LA can bring, and how we differentiate our advocacy to be implementation-focused and in partnership with others. So looking at this criteria, we looked at a range of intersecting and parallel existing and current opportunities, connecting both at the state level opportunities and large reforms with partnerships and implementation as illustrative of the landscape of opportunity and the context that we work in. So just, really just to take a snapshot, highlighting a few of them, because we know there's an ever-ending window, and there's always one opening next week, I'm sure. The federal Families First, Family First Prevention Services Act represents a significant shift in how the county and the state envision prevention, opening an important opportunity for programming, and the potential opportunity to create sustainable financing mechanism for programs and supports. In the early care and education system, making childcare rate reform real, and making sure what is advanced and adopted works for the diverse needs of families and providers in LA County. The expansion of transitional kindergarten and the commitment to universal pre-kindergarten is a very real implementation challenge, especially as we think about the critical prenatal to three years. The cradle-to-career data system will include early data, early learning data, and additional social services and health and workforce information, and will be really important to also capture the needs of young children and their families at the earliest moments. In healthcare systems, the implementation of the wide-ranging overhaul of the Medica system or CalAim include key components like enhanced care management benefit, the new health plan performance standards, and other new benefits as opportunities around the new strategies for quality improvement goals, network planning, and data quality changes. And the proposed reforms in the Mental Health Services Act, the modernization of our behavioral health system, and the significant investments in Child and Youth Behavioral Health Initiative are an opportunity for prioritization and clarifying the importance of prevention and early intervention while networks of care are being developed. So this, of course, is not an exhaustive list, but a sampling of the landscape of the really ripe opportunities across multiple systems. And the examples I just highlighted are a good representation of really large reforms that have a direct impact on the well-being of children, but also aren't necessarily meant to prioritize the critical window of prenatal to five. And we can have various roles influencing, partnering, and so on within those efforts. And now I will turn it to my buddy, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Madam Director. Now we're turning to the third part of this landscape analysis, and this is the portion in which the Center for Child and Family Impact undertook an examination of seven current initiatives representing the vast majority of our, our current budget. In some cases, these initiatives represent the last few years of work, and in some instances, they represent well over a decade of experience in investing in some of these areas. For the programmatic review, you'll see the areas of, of the initiatives listed on the left hand of this slide, and on the right hand of this slide included an analysis focused on the initiative goals, the learning that we've been experiencing called through our experience of work to date, the partners, often county, with whom we've engaged over the course of this work, the roles that first five LA has undertaken, with some reflections on what's working well and what's been more challenging, as well as some highlights of family and community priorities lifted up through these initiatives. In the slides that follow, I'll dig into these a bit more. So what are we learning? Some of the learning we've had is that, no surprise, child and family-serving systems are disconnected. And related to this, we found the existence of various collaborative tables, which sometimes can be existing structures that might inform governance. Other times, they're less formal, but they are tables that bring together system partners with stakeholders, and that they've been really essential for planning and coordinating around specific work related to these initiatives. Some examples of that include the Home Visiting Collaborative Leadership Council convened by first five LA and the Department of Public Health, for example. In addition, due to our fiscal realities, we are increasingly looking to bring together other resources and funding streams, some of which Sharna mentioned, which heightens the need to be able to blend and braid different funding sources from their respective, with their respective fiscal constraints, also requiring a certain amount and significant amount of cross-sector collaboration and knowledge. Our work on the African-American infant and maternal mortality prevention is example, an example where first five LA has pooled our resources with other funders. And work on the home visiting coordination is an example of, about how different system partners have come together to braid funding, whether it be from CalWorks, from state, and federal home, home visiting funding streams, or those of first five LA. The second point on this slide to highlight is how first five LA can be seen by county partners as a trusted entity, which we'll speak about further in a moment. We also have learned the benefit of including community voice in our work across these initiatives, which has also elevated community and family priorities, which I'll dig into in a slide, in an upcoming slide. So who are first five LA's system partners? Oftentimes, our partners are county entities reflective of the fact we're a creature of the county, and overwhelmingly, these partnerships are in the health system. All seven initiatives included in this part of the landscape analysis called out some key partnership across the health system, including the Department of Public Health called out most often, then the Department of Mental Health, and this would include partners in the healthcare provider and healthcare delivery system, as well including hospitals, clinics, managed care plans, and Medica. An example of how first five LA has effectively managed or used these partnerships is an example of the health system team's quarterly convening of all the managed care plans locally here in Los Angeles County. Formally, that table or convening did not exist, and since implementing this, we've been able to bring together not only the managed care plans, but some of the system leads as well. And some system partners that have joined that group include the Department of Public Health, the Office of Child Protection, and others that have connected to the managed care plans. And we've also brought in outside experts on Medicaid funding, for example, to that table. In order of frequency cited, the next most often cited partner was the Department of Children and Family Services, especially in the area of families' first planning as well as prevention. Next was Laco, Los Angeles County Office of Education, mainly around our ECE work, and specifically collaborations around quality efforts like Quality Start LA. And less frequent, but key partnerships involve the Department of Social Services, mainly around CalWorks funding for home visiting and the provision of basic needs. And the Office of Child Protection, the Center for Strategic Partnerships, and the Anti-Racism Diversity and Inclusion Initiative work, especially around the county's Prevention Services Task Force on which first five LA sits. So those are the examples of the partners called out. In addition, we just acknowledge that there are a significant number of local community-based organizations that are also critical partners of ours in moving this work forward. So with those partnerships- So with those partnerships, this slide calls out the top six most often cited First Five LA roles. Oftentimes, we're called out as playing multiple roles, but these are the ones that tended to rise to the top. Just a couple to highlight. In my earlier comment on the learning of First Five LA often being seen as a trusted partner, you'll see how this plays out in in various ways, where we often are relied on to develop relationships across multiple partners and across multiple sectors to enhance networks, supporting the systems that we're working to improve. In addition, First Five LA is often referred to as not being bound to one specific system, rather being able to more neutrally see the intersections, or lack thereof, of child and family-serving systems. It's also manifested in the role of connector in that we often have access to different areas of expertise that can benefit our county's system partners. An example of this is funding consultants to come in and help do some fiscal mapping in several areas, including home visiting, early care and education, in an effort to ensure that we're looking broadly at what could be newer existing funding streams to maximize the resources for kids and families in LA County. Referring back to Sharna's presentation on policy opportunities, this work and these relationships can also help us advocate. Our knowledge gained from years of working across these initiatives, as well as what is or what is not working for Los Angeles County allows us to strengthen the counties and our voice in areas ripe for advocacy. Though we've done this somewhat throughout the years, more recently and increasingly, we are also seen as a recipient of other funding beyond Prop 10 and can be a fiscal agent or a pass-through entity. A great example of this is the action the board took earlier today, authorizing us to receive funding from the Department of Mental Health, as well as from First Five California previously to fund some of the quality work here in Los Angeles. So informed by the learning, the partnerships, and the roles we've played with those partners, what is working well? I've spoken to some of the points on this slide, because what's working well builds upon the learning and the partnerships. The other item to call out on this slide is the flexibility and responsiveness First Five LA can play when working with system leaders to implement initiatives. We have access to more flexible resources, albeit decreasing, to help support our system partners. For example, our investment in a managed care plan or a county Department of Health Services clinic to build out a process change or create a billing system is an example of how we can help a partner develop something through one-time resources in order to access Medicao. Oftentimes, these resources aren't just financial and can include access to outside expertise or data, as is in the case with First Five LA's funding that built the Stronger Families database, which helps manage data across disparate home visiting models. The final point I'll highlight from this slide is that this is all done to positively impact children and families. The data cited here on this slide is drawn as from the Stronger Families database, which I just mentioned, and is helping us make the case with local health plans on how they can better be meeting the needs of families while advancing progress on their state accountability measures in these cases, including childhood immunization, maternal depression screening, and developmental screenings and assessments. This next slide highlights some of the challenges we've seen in implementing this work. And most of the points on this slide are pretty straightforward, but I do want to just add a little bit more depth to the one on Community Voice. We've invested now for well over a decade in supporting Community Voice in an effort to understand community priorities and how we can be partners in advancing those community priorities. This is an ongoing and admittedly evolutionary aspect of some of our most rewarding work. And there's an increasing systems awareness of the importance of including community and those with lived experience in systems change work, which is really exciting. But how we and others are defining community is a bit unclear. How are we identifying parent voice? How are we disaggregating parent voice from community-based organizational voice? And what about the important voice of staff, including First Five LA staff and county staff who reside in community? All of this is our important voices to be considered. And what does engagement mean and how is it most effectively done? These are key critical questions for us to continue to explore aligned to our strategic reset process. The final slide in this section summarizes the priorities being raised by families across the seven initiatives that we examined. And these are not in any particular order. We have heard resoundingly the importance of workforce, both in ensuring access and adequacy of workforce. I think the challenges in the healthcare system, in the ECE system are great examples of challenges of making sure we have sufficient workforce, as well as developing a workforce that is diverse and has walked the walk when it comes to the challenging issues that families are facing in community and navigating. We also undertook this analysis right after a global pandemic and ensuring systems are able to respond to crises, enhance crisis responsiveness, is something that came up regularly in discussions with the, through these initiatives and with community. Focus on prevention. Like many of our system leaders, families and communities seem to see the strong benefit of being able to access resources earlier. So there is less need to come into deep-end systems and be involved in systems. A great example is First Five LA and the Department of Children and Family Services working to develop a referral pathway to home visiting supports in preparing for the implementation of Families First, so that families don't have to come into deep-end child welfare in order to get connected to services. We've also heard the need to be explicit in ensuring democratic processes and structures are built into our work and systems, so communities and families can engage with and provide input. And the final point I'll call out on this slide is, again, heavily informed by the pandemic, is that systems change can't just be conceptual and focused way on down the road. I think this was clear in Nishka's discussion around basic needs. The data that ODFA found and highlighted in the earlier section underscores the importance of this and the connection to immediate resources. We need to acknowledge and address the critical importance of basic needs while using that to inform our longer-term policy and systems change work. This is not an either-or, but it is a both-and. And so with this, I'll turn it back over to Antoinette.
Thank you, John. Lot of information, commissioners. So at this time, actually, what we want to do is I'm going to turn it back to the chair for our break, but want the commissioners to see the questions that we will ask when we come back from the break, which is what themes, given what you've heard so far, what themes are emerging for you? And based on what's emerging, what roles best position First Five LA for success now and in the years ahead? So we want to turn it to the chair for a break, give you an opportunity to reflect on those questions, and then we will return for discussion.
Thank you very much for that rich, data-rich, emotional-for-me presentation. My clock says 2:48. How about we're back at 3:00? Straight up on the hour? And we'll kick it off then. Thank you very much. We'll recess till 3 o'clock.
I don't know why it's something.
The brilliant therapist.
Oh, you have an adjective for everyone.
You're my buddy.
One of the notes that I made early on was. You and Sean trying to make room for two.
Thank you very much.
All right, welcome back commissioners. Hope you've had an opportunity to digest the information that you heard and to connect with each other and members of the public and staff. So now we're going to return to the presentation and I'll actually pass it back to you, Madam Chair, to facilitate board discussion on these two questions.
Thank you very much. It was a lot to digest. And I didn't do either of the things I probably should have. I just sat and stewed in my feelings about some of the data that we saw that just took my breath away. So commissioners, what themes are emerging from the landscape analysis? And based on what's emerging from this analysis, what roles best position first five LA for success now? And in the years ahead, questions, comments, thoughts? I would say what occurred to me is that first five is uniquely positioned to gather this data when I thought about all the entities. And what role we must play to share it broadly. We've had a brief sidebar to figure out how I can get it before my colleagues in the Board of Supervisors. I think it merits presentation at a full board meeting for not only all of my colleagues to see it, but all of those who track and follow the work of the board, other department heads, et cetera. So Mr. Vice Chair is going to help me come up with a creative way in which it can be presented at a full board meeting. Other thoughts, Commissioner?
Learn to turn the microphone on. Okay. I've been just struck recently even before this presentation about the significant funding changes that are coming at us from all different directions, from the federal and the state level and the list of initiatives that you guys put together as just the key ones, because there are others in addition to the key. And so it feels like to me, one of the things, I think there are a lot of people saying, oh, my goodness, how are we going to do FIPS A? Oh, my goodness, MHS A reform that's coming. But that one of the contributions we could make, I think, is to convene conversations, focus on a population. How do these come together to particularly impact or disadvantage young children or communities that have a large population of young children? Because we're making decisions based on, you know, whatever assumptions are and our disciplines and our so it's beyond that the systems aren't connected. It's that the funding in itself breeds more disconnection. Because you've got to respond to whatever you have to, you know, the latest request. And we're just beautifully positioned after 23 years or something to be able to say, here's what we know today about this zero to five population. And here are the kind of the multiple hits we see coming. And how can we work together to make sure that they're not disproportionately in the same communities, on the same families, in the same systems, right? That we're taking the children's drawings that you showed us, you know, what are the key institutions for communities? And making sure that we're doing our best to protect a lot of what's really key to families with young children.
Does the water cooler, do they still convene in Sacramento?
I think so.
All right. Because as I'm listening to you, I'm thinking about, yeah, convenings that, right.
Right. That really focus people who have a comment on, well, we've got this and we've got, yep.
And hoping it's not too late based on that list in terms of, you know, there's some CalAim, I mean, there's some that we know are still in design, if you will, but really
malleable and
Right, in some way. Very good points. Thank you.
Right. So when we're thinking of three out of four households having children under five that speak a primary language other than English. To me, that speaks to intentional workforce recruitment and development. Because we need those resources to be able to provide these services to those individuals in a language that's accessible. So that would be one. And then I think that as we're, I think the data for me, like, my brain works in graphs and data. So I think the data helps inform where we need to be intentional in supporting and rolling out services. Like looking at the map of where the greatest number of children, birth of five are. They're not in areas where we have a plethora of providers. So like, service area one, service area two, like when I start looking at SD five and all of the really dark, dark purple. And the concentration of really young kids in those areas, that speaks to how do we incentivize providers to expand into those areas and retain staff in those areas? So.
The comment on that, and then I'll go to you, Commissioner Abdul. You know, when I think, you know, the the Daimler Alatory Act is probably 50 years old in terms of, you know, the act that requires that, you know, government provide full linguistic access to the threshold languages. And to see the chart that talks about how language can be a barrier to accessing on a par, on par level. I think it was CalFresh, but the role that plays in food insecurity is just striking, given as long as we've had the law on the books that require that we support families of, that speak multiple languages. Thank you for that. Commissioner Abdul?
Thank you. I also was struck by the map. And I think that that just kind of overwhelmed the other information that we received, which was really great and organized. But I just kept thinking of the map and how it, all of those issues are affected by, maybe you're coming to the map. Yeah. So, and each supervisory district is different, obviously. And I don't know whether we're, as an organization, set up to provide more services or coordination or whatever it is that we're providing in each area in the areas that are the darkest colors on this map. And I just, I don't know that. I'm sorry that I don't know that. But I think it's striking.
Anybody like to respond or keep the comments flowing?
I would say absolutely. There, it's a really good question to raise. And I think one of the things when we were looking, taking a look at this map, I think we went through about 16 different iterations of this map to make sure we could clearly demonstrate that there are census trusts across the county, throughout the county, that have high numbers of children, zero to five, in every single supervisory district. And I think it is both a challenge and an opportunity there to really think holistically across the county and also think about where are those areas where there are concentrations of children and families?
I just wanted to also add in, I've been on the Laco board for the last couple of years and the issues in the fifth district have been brought forward by the the people who are representing those districts at Laco as well as areas that really needed more attention. And I think that that's probably true for a lot of what is the county in particular is trying to provide. And I'm not just sure how it happened that that's the true map and then how we can make a change.
I suggest it happened because of housing affordability. And so, you know, families who need larger footprint houses, that's where it was affordable. And so it was a form of great migration, I think, for LA County and services didn't keep pace.
Yes.
So thank you. Thank you for this presentation. And whenever there's data, data leads to more questions, like the more data you have, the more questions you have. And one of the things that stood out for me was on like slides 13 and 16 where we tend to talk about people of color, BIPOC, Black and Brown communities, as if they're one in the same. And the data, you know, demonstrates that although some of the challenges are similar, they're clearly not experiencing the same level of need or we don't, we may not know why Latinos who speak Spanish are faring about the same as Black people, most of whom speak English. So what are the barriers that they're facing that are similar but also different? Which is why I appreciate it when you got to the slide talking about disaggregating the community voice. And that's one of the things I thought about too is how do we acknowledge the community voice disaggregating that data? And especially leaning into indigenous populations who we often never talk about in these spaces because the percentages are often so low. But it's still a child, even if it's 0.1%. It's still a child. And so I appreciate that. My question, I do have a question about partnering with other agencies and really about what does the partnering actually look like on a more granular level? Is it mainly collaborative funding and programming? Or is it an intentional effort to challenge or even redress some of the harmful policies that those organizations or government departments have, for example, CPS? Because we know that when a family has an encounter with CPS and 33% of Black families, you know, with children under five have, that can lead to separation, which leads to foster care, which can have a direct pathway to being unhoused. And, you know, having a criminal record before you're even, you know, 20 years old. So how far do we want to lean into some of the policy work that doesn't just directly impact first five LA? But more broadly, changes some of these other systems that feed into the needs that our populations have?
Thanks, Commissioner Rick Brad for raising that. I think to make it more concrete, you asked like a granular example. I think one partnership to acknowledge that the county is really leading in is moving away from the mandated reporter to a mandated supporter. And as part of that conversation being led by the, I think it's within the Anti-Racism and Diversity Initiative and also it's related to the Prevention Services Task Force work as well. That is an area where First Five LA has been working to connect those families. A great example of support would be connection to home visiting, so that it's not where a family needs to come in to Child Protective Services or DCFS. But that there's, instead of reporting something, you're looking, there's even a demonstration of a tool that they've identified from another jurisdiction where you can go through and answer a series of questions and realize this isn't about reporting abuse and neglect. It's really about supporting the family and connecting them to services that have been identified, whether it be food or clothing or housing. And home visiting can be that kind of vehicle. If thought about as a upstream prevention and changing the entryway into our systems for populations, that it's not about abuse and neglect, it's more about connection to services. And that, I think, the examples across those seven initiatives, the partnership looks different initiative by initiative. You had a presentation on AIM, our African-American infant maternal mortality work. There's partnerships there challenging systemic racism and bias and heard from the team on that. So it's not, it's not an answer I can give you across all seven, but those are some examples that are unique to the initiative we're partnering on, if that's helpful.
That's really helpful. And I appreciate that because I think it speaks to one of the other points you made about building the trusting relationships. Because there is a lack of trust, and we've talked about that before. I've taught parenting classes primarily to people who have mandated parenting classes for about seven years. And I've heard stories of how difficult, once you're in that system, to navigate the, to navigate the process and to meet all of the requirements. And of course, we want to keep children safe. But if someone is pulled into that system, they have to have family therapy, anger management classes, parenting classes, while maybe supporting other children and working a job, and it almost becomes impossible. I've literally had a mother tell me, I almost got to the point where I just wanted to give up and just accept that my child was forever going to be outside of my home. But it was because she was able to take the free parenting classes that we were offering, that she found one way to check off one of those requirements. So having that support, I do think changing the way we interact with the community, especially communities that feel often targeted by government systems versus supported by government systems, it's going to be another heavy lift. But I appreciate the effort, starting with the mandated support. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you for that comment right now about, because I was concerned about basic needs and that we make sure that that's woven in or braided in to all of our efforts going forward. And that's a great example of it. So thank you very much. Because I couldn't figure it out on my own, but it was there all along. Thank you.
I just wanted to expand a little bit on what John was saying, the opportunity with the Families' First Prevention Services Act, and particularly that they call the Community Pathway, families who can get support before they touch child welfare system at all. And so California has taken advantage of that opportunity. And we're doing some really active cross-department and with community voices planning around, who do you trust in communities, right? And not, we have to do a lot of thinking because we have to know where resources are and are they in the right places? And do we have the capacity, et cetera? But it's I would say, and Rob is very much involved in it too, it's a really exciting potential right now where this federal change comes at a moment when our county is very aware of the lack of community-based supports and places where families trust as the number one condition, right? Places where families trust is the number one condition, right? Not the referral process, but how do we really build on that? There there's some exciting pilot work that's just starting right now. So there's. Whenever I I look at the percentage of kids under five referred before kindergarten, it's. Very disturbing, but there but there's a lot of cross agency effort around that right now and first five is. I think a really central organizing component in a lot of that discussion. So there's some hope.
And I think I would just add on top of that, you know, the the timing, you know, the county's already focused. Multiple motions, you know, looking at how we remove bias implicit and otherwise from the decision making process. The state legislative work around, you know, California's definition of neglect is quite antiquated compared to other states. So looking more deeply to make sure that the definition of neglect doesn't also have inherent bias in it as well. So I think all those things coming together at the same time, hopefully will affect a different outcome. Commissioner.
Um, I'm I'm very sensitive about the idea of mandated reporting and neglect versus abuse. My 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 experience has been. That it would be and and our recommendation and how the clinic where I am works is that we feel that oftentimes it reports of neglect. Are the first indication that the family needs to have access to a portal of services. Not to detain the kid, but to try to keep the kid in in the in the family, but to act and make sure the family has access to care. So I'm very interested in figuring out a a means whereby those calls. If they come in from teachers and from others in the community. Are then triaged through a system where we can determine what would be in the best interest of the family. I mean, the reason, to be honest with you, the reason twenty years ago that we had funding. From first five LA to start the hub system was very, very much focused on over diagnosis. And a very ethnically biased view of detaining kids. And the idea being that you would be there not only to identify those that were at risk. But you would be there to advocate for the family that they retain their child. Some of that has been lost by by all of this and I. I do think that oftentimes those neglect calls are a fact of family putting their hand up saying, I need help. And I think that we can't just. Not hear those calls, that we need to see those calls and create a system. Number one, that's a portal that documents the community based services where they get additional funding. Where the food banks are, where the parenting classes are, where they don't be, where where we have childcare, where there's no isolation, there's a whole raft of things. And I think that we have an opportunity to advocate for those portals, that the kids get the best that they can. And that we avoid isolation of families, which is the biggest key towards abuse. And I think when we we just say, don't respond to the cases we collect, we're missing an opportunity that we shouldn't be missing. Because it's it would be tragic. And we've seen several cases in our clinic recently where that was ruled out as neglect and the child was killed. And I think that we need to have that system. Where we join forces and we unite to to reach that 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 level again. And looking at ethnic diversity and how we deliver quality services. Again, and I think we talked about this supervisor before is builds build clinics. And portals in the communities that are ethnically appropriate to that community so that the that the family enters that. System knowing that they're going to be safe. And that they that they can rank the services and we give access to the services so that. Individuals who have lived an immigrant life, whose parents don't speak English, are the professionals, et cetera, in that clinic. African American families that where the professionals have have lived a life of being. You know, not receiving the services they need, that they understand that and they're committed to excellence. I personally think that what we've demonstrated. With with preventing deaths and and bad outcomes in African Americans pregnancies demonstrates that we can do that. And I'm a real big, strong proponent on on keeping kids with their families, but I want to know when a kid's at risk.
First of all, thank you for that information. I I think I'm left more with a wondering at this point and. Reflecting back on the map as well, right? I look at that map and I think about. You know, how family friendly, how child friendly, right? Or not. Is this county becoming? And when I think about specific dollars that we drawed into the county. Like Head Start, like early Head Start that. Relies heavily on income eligibility for families to be able to receive services. I don't see a lot of those families necessarily reflected right in the center and outer parts of this map and so. We run a great risk of ultimately losing, right, that funding. If, say, Office of Head Start determines that there is no need here, when in fact, we know there's need. And so I'm thinking about that second question and perhaps that's something that first five can help do, right? It's to really drill down and identify what are those pockets of needs, right? That we can advocate for in order to continue to have those state, federal or other dollars still. Coming into the county because that would be a tremendous loss for us to not be able to do that moving forward.
I I want to add on to what you just said and then also just highlight. That the federal program of Head Start. Does not adequately fund families in California. Or especially in our county, but and there it it's very difficult to combine. Different funding sources with all the rules that there are on each one. And for families who have to navigate these systems, it's. It's really a huge challenge that they're not prepared for when they see that they're. When they understand that they need childcare. Then the the next step is not, oh, you walk through the door of a provider. No, the next step is, oh, what what am I, what's? What is is it that I can access and then what do I have to do? To get that access and it's very, very hard. So I I don't know what we can do about that, but. But the Head Start in particular, in particular, that. Looks at the income of families across the country and makes the rules. Makes it much, much harder for anyone in California to get the services that are critical for families.
And I would add to that, not just Head Start, but all of the subsidized childcare programs are income determined that, you know, even. If it's set at the statewide level, LA County suffers because we're a high cost county. And as I listen to you, Commissioner. The fear that swept over me was given that, given the cliff effect that that these programs are based on because it's income eligibility. Given the fact that we've already heard from the state that they're looking at a deficit. And what does government do when the economy is in trouble? And the general funds are in trouble, they cut. Typically programs that are the slice of the pie. That are the entitlement program, health and human services program. So I lived through that. Through through the last great recession when we cut a billion dollars out of subsidized childcare. So. I think that we need to be prepared to use this data. To argue about why this would not be the time to cut those programs. Because of what we're experiencing now, we don't want to make it worse. Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you. You to have some answers, please.
Yeah, well, in some ways I feel like you all are talking about me right in front of me. To be clear, DCFS, I sort of run the child welfare system. At the will of the board. So it was a little awkward, but I I will all. I will also say I I kind of lost my mind at slide thirteen and I've been processing ever since and I will be thinking about these slides. For days. I mean, that's the honest truth and I intend to use these slides. In other venues, I've already emailed, like I was taking pictures of them. And sending them to people who I think need to see this information. So I want to thank you for that. Provocative, upsetting in some ways, but I think it's really going to stimulate productive conversation. You know, we wear multiple hats, a board member here, DCFS director there. And I feel as a DCFS director hat, I do have to say a couple of things just publicly for the board and for the public who's listening. And we get over two hundred thousand calls to the hotline a year typically. Of of those calls. Only about five to seven percent result in open cases. And I think it's important for a couple of reasons. So one in three black children have a call made on them, which is horrible. But that does not mean, and I want people to know that, that one in three black children entered the child protective system. Again, we only open about five to seven percent of the cases that we receive calls in. From a systemic perspective, though. That means ninety-five percent of the calls we get. Did not warrant an intervention by the Child Protective Department and those families were put through. You know, an investigation by a social worker, people talking to their neighbors sometimes when they didn't have to. Do that. It's traumatic for the families. It's disrespectful in some ways. I mean, we got to make sure kids are safe, but. It suggests to me that there was a better intervention along the lines of what Dr. Hager was talking about. And that is, I just want to say, my number one. Mission as a department head, as long as the board has me there, is to rebuild and rework that system. It is preventing those families safely. From coming into contact with or entering the child protective system. So we're only there when we absolutely have to be there, to the extent. First five. Works with us on that vision. I think there's a lot of. Impact we can have and it's already happening. John particularly has been involved in a lot of those conversations. FFPSA. Is kind of the overarching, you know, term that we use or the program we use, but that really is. The direction we're headed, but there we face competing priorities that came up in the slide a couple of points. John, it was in one of your slides. And I do think there's a role for first five in helping define priorities. Both in the child space and then outside the child space. I mean. So, for example, we compete in terms of staffing and resources with other worthy. Interest, justice reform, homelessness. I mean, and and there has to be someone constantly shining the light on, but what about the kids? You know, I do it, but people expect me to do it and it gets old. Probably for some of them after a while, but I think first five can do it too, but what about the kids? And in many ways, we are the preventative. Intervention for those other systems. We can help families when they've got a little kid at home, that little kid. May not go into the justice system, may not become homelessness. And I think. That information helps inform the priorities maybe we set. I would add, I mean, two things. Jumped out at me in terms of setting those priorities. There's an ocean of need out there. We can't do it all. And we are going to have to triage that need and the things that came across in the slide and, you know. Maybe there were other things you didn't put in there, but clearly the need of black families. And language access. I think everything we do probably has to be informed. By recognition and remembrance of that, if not an intentional strategy to address those things. Can't do it all, but those those two points to me, you know, rose clearly out of the background, so.
Those two for me, plus the geographical.
I just want to thank the vice chair for your response. It was really thoughtful and and like you could have sat back and not said anything, but I appreciate it because. I don't think any of us know, like, we all know that not one person can address. All of these conditions that have been in some ways. By design for decades when they affect certain groups of people. But it's about what we're doing from this point going forward and I appreciate that. I did have one other question that came to mind about when Head Start was mentioned. We know that the governor has expanded preschool through Laco. And by twenty twenty-six, I think it will be available to three year olds. Which means a whole population of families who don't want to or don't qualify for Head Start or can't afford to pay for actual early childhood education. Will put their children into public school, which is not really designed. For early childhood educators to, you know, to thrive. We have. Multi-subject credential teachers teaching transitional kindergarten and they'll be teaching three year olds. And what happens in school and where they don't learn those socialization skills? They take the bad behavior home or they bring it from home to school and you have stressed out teachers. I think we have something like. The NEA said fifty-five percent of teachers are looking to leave the profession. Forty percent of teachers leave the profession the first five years. So you have these conditions that are kind of, again, unrelated to first five, but directly impact those families. What is the the partnership with Laco and how are we working directly with? Schools and school districts to support early actual early childhood education access?
We could, I would like to follow this up with a conversation with the true. Expert on this, which is Becca Patton, our UCE director, but. We are working closely with Laco and also the county office on the advancement of ECE as well. And specifically with Laco, I think where the the topic of the work is exactly what you're saying, which is as. UTK and expansion has rolled out, how are we dealing with the rest of the system? That is seeing the impact of that, including the workforce issues that we spoke to earlier and that you mentioned as far as the attrition and turnover of of teachers. So. We don't have an answer for that, but we it it is definitely an issue and concern that we have with our partners at Laco. And and that's an example of of working on something across systems.
And I should preface that sometimes when I ask these questions, I'm I'm not actually looking for a comprehensive answer right now. It's just the things that your presentation.
Yep. Thank you for raising it.
Yes, Commissioner.
I could just add further that one of the things I think that I appreciated about the power of the presentation in terms of working. Is sort of this bridging, right, and really kind of creating opportunities for relationship. And this is, I think, a really good example, right, where. Laco works very closely with Director Patton here and with Director Coleman at the Office for the Advancement of Early Childhood Education, specifically around. What are we doing to support the mixed delivery system, right, that is in place, that serves children and families? TK grabs all the headlines, TK, right, seems to be sort of the flavor of the month, the year, what have you, but. TK is one aspect, right, of that mixed delivery system that supports children, four year olds specifically. There's a whole other infrastructure in place that I think we need to certainly acknowledge, right, and continue to support. And I really appreciate the work that we get to do with first five and with OAECE around that and. In fact, just next week, we will be presenting, co-presenting to the Laco Board of Education. OAECE's mixed delivery grant application to the state to continue to do that work around TK and mixed delivery.
Quick question from the team that presented before we transition to our our second half where Ms. Andrews Bush and Mr. Nino will. Continue with the presentation. Anything that you. Expected or wanted to hear from the commissioners that you did not in response to those questions? Permission to speak freely.
I I think the general theme. Is very, the the questions that came up and some of the discussion is generally very helpful for us because. This can inform strategic resets so powerfully. And I think one of the challenges we have is where to focus. And trying to figure out what's working, where are those opportunities? Where the systems are open and amenable to working together in partnership? I mean, that will be discussions with the board going forward. So this is definitely very helpful feedback for us to work into that.
One more question, I'll nuance it a little differently. We we saw the PowerPoint highlights, you are steeped in all the data. Is it from your perspective, something we missed?
I wouldn't necessarily say. Because with the board, as with our staff, we're not trying to lead in a.
Not getting it. Yeah.
I mean, as John said, the feedback is incredibly helpful as we go through the strategic. I mean, as John said, the feedback is incredibly helpful as we go through the strategic plan reset process. I think it's interesting, the connection between today's conversation and the small group conversations we had with the board back in March, where we started to talk about roles and it was difficult to say which systems and which roles. And so hearing your perspectives, now that you have some data from the landscape, it's becoming a little bit sharper in terms of roles that we can, can play.
Yes, I agree with you because that did fill for me a little opening. I was all over the map. Yeah, this, this is a way that, that's why data is so important. It can hone our focus. So thank you for the first half. Let's transition.
Okay. So thank you, Commissioner. So at this time, we're going to hear from JR Nino, who is going to discuss the analysis of first five LA's operations.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioners. And that was a good discussion that we had earlier there. And especially when we were talking about the data and the policy opportunities that Sharona spoke about. We talked about things externally. Okay, what are the statistics that are out there? And John touched a little bit about what's happening internally with the programs. So this section for the analysis of first five LA operation is still an internal focus for, for this, about really how we operate. So there was a great deal of questions initially when we first wanted to do this landscape analysis about our operations here. It was interesting because when we talked cross-functionally, there was a great deal of questions to ask ourselves. What's, what's working, what's not working? There's a tendency of hearing a lot, what's not working for, for things. But these were the questions or guiding questions that we went toward to help distill some of those many questions that we received. The first are, is what are the current risks for the organization? Not only about what they are, but more about the themes that are behind these risks for, for this. Second question is, what are the top three current challenges and limitations from a people, process, technology perspective? Again, we're looking internally. That's why the question was structured that way. And then what are the current ways that we can be maximizing our assets? Assets meaning our investments, our programs that John just talked about, our people, our fund balance that the finance team just discussed about earlier, technology in our building. So the analysis included looking at past operations, lessons learned, meaning that there has been reports in the past, either internal audits, past consulting reports that we've leveraged and, and really looked at and try to distill from those, what are the lessons learned? And in addition to that, talking cross-functionally, including my colleagues here, about what's working and what's not working. So that was all part of the landscape analysis for the operations. So here are some key highlights from those questions that I, we asked previously in the, the slide. It's about the risk and the challenges. So starting from the top for the risk, we all already know about the risk of Prop 31, which has been put upon us. Further decrease on our impact and sustainability is that risk for, for that. We were just talking previously about our role, what role you can play for the future for this. So the next two risks come from that in terms of what skills are needed to support those roles long-term and what changes need to be made internally to further support those roles from a policy and procedures perspective. In other words, for example, policies and procedures, if they don't align with our organization, then it'll create efficiencies and ineffectiveness in our impact to the, the people that we want to serve. In terms of the challenges, these are items that we must address for, for these. These came up from the feedback from talking to our staff cross-functionally. How do we measure success? That is always a area of challenge for, for this from an internal perspective and external perspective. Another theme was understanding and revalidating what must be done as an organization to further streamline organizations. So what that means is we have policies that we put in place and those policies were put in place at a time where it probably made sense. And because of our strategic reset and things changing, what our landscape analysis is telling us, business changes, requirements change. So that would naturally mean our policy should be kept up to date for, for that. So that's what that part means. For the next team theme, in time of transition, keeping people informed, keeping our in, in external partners informed is very challenging in, in some cases, especially for our strategic reset that is coming up. So it's very crucial to make sure that we have accurate and timely information provided to our staff and our key stakeholders. Similarly, in time of transition with our fiscal reality, there is challenging areas of how do we maximize our assets in terms of our people, investments in our infrastructure for, for those? In other words, how do we make sure that we're firing on all cylinders on our fund balance and making good use of our assets? As mentioned earlier on some key themes on opportunities gathered from the operational analysis, for simplicity purposes, these are some themes that are categorized into people, investments, which means programs and funds, infrastructure, which includes our technology and our building, and external partners. Now, under people, the opportunities lie with aligning staff development with the evolving work. So in other words, making sure our staff are developing in the right direction of where we want to be for the future in terms of our role that we want to play. And secondly, ensuring that our work ahead is planned, prioritized and sequenced in a way that it's, it's rational and where we're using our resources most effectively for, for that. The right order of how the work should progress. Under investments, first five LA's future role could inform opportunities into other funding streams that we touched on a bit. John mentioned about one of the roles of being a pass-through for, for those. But also having the right sustainability plans for the programs that are coming up for us in the future. As I mentioned earlier, I talked about maximizing our assets, what we currently have. There are opportunities here to reassess our fund balance that Rolal and Daisy were talking about earlier, using data and cost optimization techniques to reduce our costs. In other words, really looking at our spend and seeing if we can value engineer what we're spending in order to reduce cost for the future. Under infrastructure, there are opportunities, not only in identifying the right technology, but also using it properly, the right training for, for that. You can always have the right tool, but if we don't know how to use it the, the best way, it may not be very effective for that. So another opportunity here as well is our building, which is actually one of our biggest assets that we have. There are opportunities here, as Carla mentioned, about leasing opportunities to help with our fiscal reality, as well as having office space for, for our community for that. Finally, understanding our future role in the organization will help us reimagine how we engage set expectations for our external partners. Additionally, there is opportunity to leverage our DEI work that we have done all of last year for, for this and better integrate that into our procurement practices and outreach strategies. Another explanation for, in terms of procurement practices for DEI, how do we remove obstacles that prevent certain business to participate in the procurement practices as are? So these are themes that come out from the DEI work from, from that. So what I just shared, what you hear were themes from the operational analysis, again, looking internally. We were just talking about externally. So does it, the internal focus of us? I'll now pass it on to Antoinette, who will provide insights on and lessons from the field.
Thank you, JR. So Commissioners, we did look to the field to see what others are grappling with, what they're also learning and what their insights are. We reviewed a, about 29 reports, not about, we reviewed 29 reports. And that list is in appendix two in the, in the board packet. So, you know, consistent with what Nezca shared today and with the, the conversation that we've had, not just during today's board meeting, but consistently over the last several board meetings. The pandemic really did exacerbate pre-existing issues. And it, the, the, the reports underscored that no single organization can do this alone. This is exactly, you know, it's like you said, that the ocean, there's an ocean of need. No one single organization can do this alone. Across the reports, there were consistent messages around the importance of a multidisciplinary approach, which Commissioners have also elevated in prior conversations. Working in partnership with parents and communities to redesign systems so that they work better for families. Addressing both immediate needs and longer-term systemic issues, which means taking a long view versus investing in short-term projects. The importance of addressing internal organizational processes and practices and structures, staff and culture, what JR just spoke to, to increase an organization's effectiveness and centering equity and addressing the impact of structural racism, which requires us to look beyond the presenting issues to the root causes that perpetuate poor outcomes for children and families. Now, as we connect the dots between each of the components of the landscape, and just as a reminder, there are five components to the landscape that we have reviewed with you today, a clearer picture comes into view. So alignment with partners early and often is vital. Engaging communities as partners, not as service recipients, but as partners, is also critical. Developing authentic relationships with communities and working in partnership with them to develop solutions to immediate needs and systemic issues will yield better results. And these were among the learnings that John shared from the analysis of first five LA's current programmatic work. The needs of children and families evolve rapidly. So public systems and organizations have to be nimble and adaptive and promote innovation. The pandemic was a stark reminder that our systems have to be able to withstand dramatic shifts in context so that children and families are nurtured and supported now and in the future, regardless of what happens in the external environment. But this, but it's also a painful reminder of the significant inequities that are producing consistently poor outcomes, particularly for children of color, which, as Nezca noted, are the majority of children under five in Los Angeles County. So we must center equity and address, address structural racism. Now, back in the February, during the February board meeting, Dr. Scorsa presented to the board and he talked about acknowledging that institutions and their systems have been intentionally designed to benefit or exclude certain populations. And in his presentation materials, there was a particular quote on equity that I want to recall here. And it said that systems must be balanced to distribute resources and opportunities needed to reach equal outcomes by treating everyone justly according to their circumstances. So centering equity and addressing structural racism require a long-term commitment. And that takes time. And yet families have needs right now. They need support right now. And this is very clear from the, the data and the landscape. So there's an important interplay between direct services and systems change. Disparities in health and safety, basic needs and access to family supports are right now issues. But there are also structural reasons why these disparities exist and these must be addressed as well. So direct services and systems change are both important to address the immediate needs of children and families today as we address the root causes of why these needs exist in the first place. So these are big, complex issues. And first five alone cannot improve conditions of children and families on our own. So Sharona highlighted several opportunities to leverage and maximize resources beyond first five LA's resources. And all six of these bulleted points on this slide invite first five LA to operate differently, building our capacity to work more efficiently in a multidisciplinary, equity-centered partnership and results-oriented way. So now we return to the questions from the earlier discussion. And so I just want to test whether I should move on to the next few slides and then go to discussion, or if we want to stop at this point for any additional feedback.
I will suggest that we go on to the digital slide.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So Commissioners, we shared a lot of information today, and I've said that multiple times. I just want you to know that we acknowledge that this is a lot and there's so much more. What we presented is actually a snapshot of all of the information that we, we provided. And we're going to generate more information when we conduct a SWOT analysis, which is an exploration of first five LA's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. As this graphic depicts, depicts, the information generated through the landscape and SWOT analysis will be synthesized as we go through the strategic plan reset. We will be guided by a results-based framework that will help us narrow our priorities and make decisions around goals, objectives and strategies so that we can more clearly articulate not just what we're trying to achieve, but why and how. Now, because this information today, presented today is a lot to digest, we are planning deeper dives into the landscape during the June Program and Planning Committee meeting, as well as the July board meeting. The landscape findings are inputs to subsequent discussions, as I said a moment ago, on first five LA's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, with board engagement anticipated during the July board meeting. Now, both the landscape and the SWOT will be used to develop goals, objectives and strategies drafted over the summer and discussed with the board in September. And this concludes our very lengthy presentation. I will now turn it back over to the chair for any additional discussion.
Thank you very much. Let me first give Commissioners an opportunity to respond to the second portion of the presentation.
I just want to say thank you. This is only my second meeting. I've been in some of the smaller meetings, but I just want to thank you because I've learned so much, not just about the data and the people that we're serving and our partners, but also the process that you are engaging in to address the, the current need and the, the forecasted, you know, budgetary constraints. And I just want to thank you because I've learned so much and I'm proud to be a part of this work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Of course.
I want to thank you. I think the, I think the data, I can't see you over this. I over there. I think the data really is important and, and your recommendation.
Yeah, I'm running.
And I think your conclusion that action is linked to policy is spot on. And I think that we can't be deterred by words. But we need to be galvanized by action. And sometimes by creating a model response or encouraging a model response, we encourage others to mimic what we do and thereby amplifying our ability to change policy. You know, something that I'm, I'm really a strong proponent of, but I do think we have to recommend action rather than, than, I mean, it's great that we're going to talk about it and find ways, but I do think we also have to advocate for some change in, in quality care for those who are underserved. And unless we do that, nobody's going to make the move, you know? It's the hard button to actually galvanize people to work together and that. So I really want to thank you. I think it's great. But I'm more than willing to participate in action and less likely to participate in, in words.
Thank you so much. I just want to echo all the positive feedback that my colleagues have shared. And one thing I, I just, I, I want us to think about is how to open up this space to more people and more community members. I would love to see a packed house here. I would love to hear calls coming in from the public. And maybe people are used to just, you know, because we were all in our different places during the pandemic, but it's time to open up. And it's time to bring this closer to the community. So I'm looking forward to that. And then in the And it's time to bring this closer to the community, um, so I'm looking forward to that and then in the coming.
And uh, you know, I, I share that and, and we may need to give some thought to how we do that. So
Yeah.
Continuing the theme, uh what I particularly loved is how you brought it together. And, and bringing it to, and what does that mean organizationally? I, I think is um, and there's some immediate questions in front of us, right? And no simple answers, but it, it, I feel like it makes it a, a discussion that we share. Which is, you did a wonderful job in, in presenting the, the context and the specifics, but also saying, okay, and these are the questions that face us as an organization, which means all of us. And we're um all ready to, to help, thank you, thank you.
For Commissioner Bird.
So I, I'm just going to jump on the, you know, fan club bandwagon right now. Because um as I'm thinking, I can already predict I'm not going to sleep well tonight because I'm going to be tying this together and looking at data. Um, and playing with, how do we fix this or what are some next steps, how do we? So my mind's already there, um, I think this was fantastic, really, so thank you very much. And I'd like uh to echo you, um, to echo you, I think that the tying it all together, the theme that I continue to see is the partnership, partnering, the bring, I think that that is key for moving this work forward. And I was sitting here thinking, it must be a super exciting time for the staff at First Five, because we're actually taking it to a new level. Um, and trying to figure out, how do we best meet the needs of our community? And to me, that's very exciting, so I truly appreciate the, the work you've done and the staff.
Well, I think you did a lousy job. All right, everybody's awake, okay, I was testing you. No, phenomenal, um, thank you for hearing us and putting it all together in a way that we could bond to you. Um, for me, for next step, I really hope that you, you, we all can think about ways and spaces in which we share this data. Um, because it is powerful, um, not everybody has it. Um, and so uh we've got our thinking caps on, I hope others will as well. About just the, you know, we have to do this work internally in terms of of how it informs our reset, but just the data in and of itself is rich and valuable to a global um community, so I hope that you will think about ways in which that could be distributed um far and wide. Anything else you want us to touch on? You've sucked every piece of energy out of me. Um, let me look back at what I'm supposed to be referring to. And so are we going to open up for public comment for this section? I know Council keeps looking at me like, why do you keep asking the same question? I'm going to get eventually, public comment on item number ten.
Confirming there are no public comments, but Commissioner Martinez, we will work on getting a bunch of calls.
Thank you very much again, we appreciate the presentation. Um, moving on now to um general public comment to address items that are not on the agenda, general public comment.
Confirming there are no general public comments.
Appreciate you, uh, is there any other business um that we should consider uh or call on before we adjourn today's meeting? For many Commissioners? You, madam? All right, hearing and seeing none, we are now adjourned, thank you everyone for your attention and energy today, thank you, we stand adjourned.